All this meeting to order. Start out with the roll call. Here. May I ask you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag for the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one way under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, if I remember right, um, okay, we do have, we do have the order that we will start out with the parched rules. Go through those for review and adoption. Just for everybody's purpose, has everybody had an opportunity to read through the rules that were given out to us, modified rules with the amendments from the last meeting? Okay. Are there any questions about any of those rules or the changes?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question about the current form, but I think the process is, is what we're deciding tonight is something that then will be published and will have more public comment on.
That is, that is correct. All this is, is a correction, so we're, we're ready for prime time, is basically what.
And publication.
And, yeah, and it will be out for publication, once we, once we approve these. I just, we were just trying to dot our i's and cross our t's and be prepared for the public comments, so. That's, that's where we're at right now, and that's all we would be doing at this point in time. We're not, this is not a final approval. We'll still have the forty-five days of public notice, so that everybody has an opportunity to look at it and come back and, and talk to us about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that? Did anyone have, any of the board members have any issues with any of the, the changes on there? Okay. With that said, do I have a motion for approval? For the draft version to be sent out for public notice?
No motion.
Okay. Motion moved by trustee Nick Lason, seconded by trustee Millen. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Motion carries. Alright, we will move on to the bylaws. Alright, we will go through these a little bit at a time. Does anybody have any questions or anything on the first page? Article one, article, or article two on the first page?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I literally have two, four, five.
Sorry.
Five bylaws versions, so can we just make sure we're all looking at the same, same one?
Yes, I am looking at, uh. Let me double check, make sure I'm looking at the same one.
And I know counsel tried to point out in a, in an email to us, kind of which ones were which ones, and we got a number of versions with that, so I, I don't know. As long as we're looking at the same one and the same version, I think that'll be helpful.
I am not. I'm trying to figure it out, which one we're actually looking at right now. Cause the one I have, the one I was looking through was the last one that Legal sent out to us. Yes.
This one?
It has, it has the yellow on it, um, and I went through and adjusted.
I have names for you. I have Nicolason on one, North on one, Original on one, Milne on one. This looks like Casey and I did some of it.
The one that I'm looking at, the statute one, and that's where I believe Mr. Duncan Malon highlighted the exact statutory language, so that you all could compare that to the language that was proposed.
And which one is that in our packet?
So that's called statute, right?
That's called statute, and then without statutes highlighted, it's called. What's, what's this?
That's.
Must be an older version before these downloads, because there's other x's and it doesn't have the adopted date of March fifth. I can help you look at. Or you can take mine.
I do not see the one in our packet that says statute.
I see one, um, yeah, the third one down says February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five draft, twenty twenty-five parks bylaws with statutory language.
Okay. That, that is, that is the correct one.
So that's not one we looked at, at our last meeting. Those are some of the changes since.
Those are the ones, those were the, those are the ones that were sent out back to us with the statute in there versus the original language. It had the.
Mr. Chairman. So, we've got three copies. We've got a red line, we've got one that's statute, and we've got a clean version. Um, as we go through this discussion, I understand having a statute one, that's cool for reference, but that's not the one that we're actually adopting or, or doing anything. Uh, it'd be my preference to either work off the red line or the clean version if possible. And if we need to reference back to the statutes, cool, but I'd rather be able to just see what I'm, I'm focusing on, not what the state of Wyoming has set up as a statute somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Millen. The one, one of the ones that I understood that, one of the ones that we did, the statutes were kind of when they were placed in, they were not. Not duplicates of the state statute. So then I understand there was one where, where there is statutory authority in the bylaws, it's been replaced or shown what the actual statute says.
Yeah, I took, I didn't really review that one a whole lot, cause I took it as a reference material, not something that we were actually going to pass as, as our bylaws.
My thought was we're gonna pass the bylaws, but if it contains statutory authority, it would be the exact statute authority, statutory, word for word authority. That's what I thought.
Okay. Commissioner.
In other words.
I, I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, Jim, basically what happened is the highlighted stuff, the, the stuff with the statute in there, has the original stuff uncovered.
Right.
The only difference is, is that if there was a specific statute with language in there.
Okay.
That statute is highlighted, right next to it.
So we're.
So we know what the difference is, what the actual language is versus what the statute is.
So we're going to incorporate?
No, so we can decide whether we want to incorporate what the actual statute says, or what the other language was.
I'm not seeing any of the changes. So, Mr. Chairman, um, the version that is on the computer, zero-two dot zero-seven dot twenty twenty-five Commissioner Redline draft, twenty twenty-five parks bylaws. Um, all I see is literally a vertical red line in the margin. So I'm not seeing actually the red lines, uh, the red line language. So, maybe it's just the view on my, are you seeing it on yours? You know what the bad news is? We got it yesterday, and we had a meeting, and mine's at home on my desk. Not necessarily, if it's here.
So what's on here, or this stuff that we were handed, that was on our desk today, is the current versions, or? Okay. I don't mean to be a problem here, but I'm just, I'm confused a little bit.
So apparently if you, you click on that vertical red line in the left margin, then everything comes up. So it was a view issue on my computer. So at least I can see.
I'm trying to figure out which one you were actually looking, the top one?
Is that the one we're looking at to go over, or which?
Okay, so if it is the top one on, on the computer file. The original language is where we were at the end of our last meeting. And the, the red line stuff is what's been put in between then and now.
And I can't open the one that says red line.
Just. Okay. The fifty kilobit version. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I just wanna make sure we're all looking at the same thing when we're going through these.
Thank you.
Michelle just.
Well, no, I thought we're.
Which one are we looking at? We're looking at this one?
Red line, or the statute, or?
Jim, if you want a copy of the statutory stuff.
No, I think I got it, right?
He has one.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's basically what we're gonna be looking at, because everything else was included. They went through. And all they did was change that, so we're gonna be looking at the statute to see, compare the difference in the statute versus what's, what the actual verbiage is.
So.
Adjustments we need to make.
So we're not gonna, so the, just so I get this right, Dave, sorry.
Yeah.
The, the red line is actually, all the changes of the red line on here are on here at this point.
That's.
And then also the, then included is the statutory language.
That, that is my understanding. That is correct, so it's good. That, that's what Legal was working on, so. Is that correct, Heather?
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Okay, so the red line document, this document here that includes the statutory language. The, the unhighlighted, the, the, the language that is in here is what was the red line, including all the changes, correct?
Um, trustee Millen, so this is a, a clean copy of the red line document with all the changes incorporated.
With the statute included.
Yes, sir, and then that each highlighted provision is the direct statutory language, and we tried to put it in the section that fits.
So.
Good to go.
Basically, she was trying to make it easy for idiots, so, so we could read it and figure it out and know exactly what we were looking at, so. 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 Did you get that now? You, you, you ready to go? Alright, so we are looking at this one, that has the statutory language in there as well, so. Alright. With that said, is everybody looking at the same thing? Okay. You have a copy of this one. This one has all that stuff in there, if you want to look, okay. So, alright. Has anybody got, does anyone have any issues with article two?
Art, article two or one?
Article one. Why don't you look at one that has the yellow on it? Why don't you look at this, so you can see what, what's going on here?
Okay. Article one, does anybody have any questions about any of that stuff? That, I don't think we have any reservations about that in our last meeting, so.
So article one, if we're looking at the thing with yellow, a whole bunch of yellow on it, that version. What, what we were okay with before is not highlighted, and what is statutory language, or closer to the statutory language is in yellow?
Okay.
So.
That is correct.
Previously, like, for example, it did say, for the purpose of providing a source of active participation by a wide range of citizens in planning, setting priorities. I'll stop there, versus the statutory which says control, maintain, manage. Right?
Yes, that is correct.
And then money's levied, shall be expended only. Um, Board of County Commissioners, the third sentence, Board of County Commission made to solve. Um, any board appointed.
Under the subsection.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, are we looking at trying to combine these, or, or?
No.
Replace what we did in our prior meeting with what's in the yellow, or?
Commissioner Laird asked what the statutory language actually said. And if we wanted to go with the statutory language versus the verbiage that we had in there.
So when I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So now I'm looking at the red lined version on my computer that doesn't have the yellow. And article one, um, looks to be unchanged, from what we saw two weeks ago.
Uh huh.
We didn't change it, but we didn't know what the statute actually said. That's the reason why Legal just put the statute in there, so we could actually read what the statute said versus.
This is still.
Oh, I see what you're trying to do, yeah.
Right, so we're not proposing any changes to what it was.
Uh huh.
They just showed us what the statute said. It's like option. Okay, here's what the statute says, but what we're being asked is to leave it how we had it two weeks ago.
Either leave it the way we had it, or go with what the actual statute says. So.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I felt that, uh, I wanted to see what, cause we, some of the statutes had been editorialized and then placed into bylaws. If we're gonna use the statutory language. It was my belief that we should use the exact statutory language, and so as I understand it, uh, Heather. The, the yellow is the exact statutory language, word for word, right out of the statute.
Yes, trustee Millen, that's, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that?
Well, there's, it, 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 my belief is we should use the statutory language. As opposed to an editorialized version of the statutory language. Unless there's some really truly relevant reason to change, I think we can change the statute in here.
I, I'm inclined to agree with that, just because the statutes were written specifically. Cover it.
And if, you know, if something comes up where they feel they need to not abide by that statute, or the statute doesn't fit, or whatever, who knows? They can always change it down the line, but to get the proper statutory language in here now, I think is highly important.
Any other discussion on that?
Uh, I think it, that's, I mean, this isn't what we agreed to at the end of the last meeting. So with that in mind, I'd say that we probably need to go through these one by one. There are cases where I believe it is relevant for Natchona County to make it Natchona County's person recreation bylaws, not state of Wyoming's. Uh, attempt to, whatever, it may or may not apply to the purpose that we're trying, so we need to, each, each and every one of these that have been added in, we need to go over and discuss.
That was what I was.
Yeah.
That, that's the direction we were gonna take.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Heather, have you done any research on whether we can editorialize on these statutes, or should we basically use what the statute actually says?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Laird, I, I don't have a, I think as long as we don't have contradictory language in the bylaws that contradict the statutes. You, you can choose to, to use the statutory language, or you could choose to use language that differs, as long as I think the meaning and intent remains the same.
Is that true, even though we quote the, the number of the statute in the body of the document?
Um, trustee Laird, I, I'm assuming you're referencing that statute that applies when you do that?
The first one, the first one, article one, it says what the statute is above, and then the, the statute itself is placed. I think that's. I don't know if that's the way it is throughout the whole thing, but, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, Commissioner Laird, I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead and interrupt, it's fine.
No, I, I'm not going to, so I'll wait till he's done.
Go ahead. Go ahead, all period, and continue on. I don't feel well today, so I don't have enough room for argument today.
Go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, if this article one is statutory authority, um. Then, and, and having just reviewed the statute eighteen-nine-one-oh-one. The language that's in the highlighted version, um, certainly is closer to what is the statutory authority. And then, then some of what I'm seeing, for example, it, statutory, I don't see the statute saying it's for the purpose of seeking active participation by a wide range of citizens. Now, I, I think we can have that as a vision, a mission. I think we can put it in other places, but if this is statutory authority, it seems to me that. Um, then also saying, bring together all of the resources which currently exist, and seeking out additional resources, doesn't really seem statutory, related to statutory authority for an article one, kind of. Interductory statement. So, in, in this case, um, and I don't know where I'm gonna be in any of the other cases, but in this case, I would be okay with, uh, the yellow highlighted language. Um, I'm reserving the right to add some of this other stuff later, where we're not talking about statutory authority.
Do we have any other discussion on that? Commissioner Laird? Mr. Laird?
I, I hear what he's saying, and, uh, what I had hoped that would happen would be that we have a set of bylaws that totally complies with the Wyoming statutes. Now, one of the ways of total compliance would be to, I suppose you could footnote the Wyoming statute that applies. As to each paragraph, and then put a footnote down that Wyoming stat, that's the Wyoming statute that complies. I mean, I've seen that done. So, I, I think it's, it'd be unfortunate if we spent too much time air rattling around over certain editorial language, uh, as opposed to the Wyoming state statutes. But when I read certain legal texts, they'll, the person explaining it'll be editorializing, and then he'll add a footnote to, please see Wyoming statute. Eighteen-nine-one-oh-two-F, for comparison. Now, I think that could be done, and that, that may be a way of doing it that, uh. Makes sure that, uh, because lawyers can interpret things differently, but if you, if you allude to the statute so that people can see it and know that's the statute that really carries the day. If there's an argument, it may be easier to deal with this.
Okay, my understanding was that Mr. Nicolason was saying that we should adopt the highlighted portion, and not the, not the unli, highlighted portion in his first portion. So he's saying.
He's probably, he's probably right on that.
So he's saying that we should adopt this.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's adopt, if everybody is in agreement, let's adopt that, and then move on to the next one.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so we will do that. We will, we will adopt the highlighted portion and get rid of the unli, highlighted portion in article one. Okay? Okay. Just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page. Alright, article two. The highlighted portion. This is, this is where we need to decide how many board members we're actually going to have.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I've seen the statute before with other boards, and it's, it's my opinion, this is the statute you have to abide by, period.
So we just leave the whole thing in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this other board wanted to have twelve members, and then they said Cheyenne did something, so we, they're all rattling around with these statutes. But what ends up in the final analysis is, is that the statute is the ruling body of what should be done there, the ruling statement, pardon me.
Okay, so, in two-point-one-point-one, does everybody agree that we leave the highlighted area as written?
Wait, one more?
Yeah, the, um, article two. Just bottom of the page.
First page, Jim.
Bottom of the first page, bottom of the first page.
I'm just, no, I, I get it.
Yeah, just that, just that first paragraph, the one that starts out with the Wyoming statutes, statute eighteen-nine-one-oh-two.
Right, it's just we have some redundancy with, uh, twenty-one, two-point-one-point-three, that one.
Take a look at two-point-one-one first, and see if you agree to the fact that that should be the head statement.
Well, I'm wondering if that shouldn't be put in place of two-point-one-three instead of two-point-one-one.
Commissioner Millen, I just noticed that, and I do believe it's just a, like, what you'd call a typo in the wrong spot.
Oh.
Meaning that first highlighted section under two-point-one-point-one really should go under two-point-one-point-three, the same as you alluded to.
Okay. Does everybody see what I'm saying?
Yep. Okay, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we will move.
We leave two-point-one-one alone, but move.
The highlighted portion.
Highlight station.
Yep.
Or two-point-one-three.
Yep.
And I hope you good note takers over there are getting all this down.
Okay, so we're gonna move the highlighted portion down into two-point-one-three at the start. It'll, on, on the next page. It'll, no, it'll go to here. It'll move to right here and start. No, it just.
What, what is? That's what I understand is proposed.
That's my understanding. It's merely, I don't know who did this, maybe I did it, merely someone put the yellow highlight under two-point-one-one, that should have gone under two-point-one, or two-point-one-three. So it's just a misplacement, I guess, of statutory language.
Okay, so we're basically just removing the one that was in two-point-one-three, replacing it with the highlighted statutory language that came out of two-point-one.
Yes.
Everybody in agreement on that?
Uh, give me a second, I gotta compare, just flip them pages back.
Mr. Chairman, while Commissioner Millen's doing that, or trustee.
Just call him Mr. Millen. Just call him Mr. Millen. We'll just call him Mr. Millen. Let's just do that. Trustee is too hard.
Alright, um, are, are we going to dial this in when we talk about no fewer than five, nor more than nine? Are we gonna pick? Are we gonna split the difference at seven? Are, are we gonna, um, do that? I, I think that, like, like, we would not have the, we would be in violation of the statute if we said four, or three.
We have to. We have to, we have to have between five and nine.
I, I, I agree, but I think this is one of those areas where we have discretion, as long as it's between five and nine. So, my question is, are we gonna take a position and say, um, we're gonna have five, or seven, or nine at this point in time? We can always, these always can be changed, but do we need to provide a little more guidance than five to nine?
I think it would make it a whole lot easier to find out where we're gonna go if we set the number.
So.
But I'm open to suggestions.
So, we're proposing like to have a, a two-point-one-point-three-point-one or something like that?
No, I'm sorry.
Or just, or?
Trustee James, I was thinking that what we would do, what, what we would do is, from the yellow language, that's the statutory language, we would just say, composed of, for example, seven competent citizens.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I don't have any problem with setting the number, I, personally, I think.
If we change it, that's, you know, I guess now would be the time, or, like I said, that sub, sub, below it would be fine too, whatever you guys want. But, yeah, I agree, we oughta probably set it since we're here.
Mr. Early portion of this where additionally, not to complicate this, but initially, having seven, two, two more commissioners down the road to drop off at a time, and then we can eventually, you know, change that server to a public board, but I think that initial, maybe two, you know, two beyond five would be a good way to get the things moving. So, that's just my, my thoughts at the moment. Well, what I mean is.
You sound like the other two lawyers.
No, I'm trying to think. Seven would be a great number to start out, it doesn't need to be five, never down the road, but I'm gonna have to talk about it, I'm just trying to get my thoughts, trying to dial a number.
I, I personally, I mean, every other board we have has five. It's five. Library has five, the park, or the fair has five, every other board we have has five. Now, I, now I understand what you're saying, but if we, if we slowly move off and we're replacing people as we go, we don't have to all drop off at the same time, then we get some of that continuity, and then we bring people on as we go. So, I'm, I'm not, I agree with what you're saying, I just think that seven is going to be an awkward, more of an awkward number, is all I'm, I'm getting at.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we just adopt the statute, everybody gets what they want, between five and nine. Uh, there's a part of me that would like to let the people that get on the board initially decide whether they want, maybe they want nine, maybe they want six, I don't know, but how much control do we really wanna give when the statute gives us the control right here in the statute? We don't have to pick seven today, we just need to get these bylaws done today, and then we can determine later, do we want to, do we wanna send out a notice for seven or five? But I don't think we have to do that today. If you pick the statute, it says, shall be composed of not less than five nor more than nine, I think trying to decide all of that today is pretty much a waste of time, in my opinion. It doesn't have to be done right now because the statute says, we can do it at any time. If we get it all done, then we get a notice out, and then we get different things out, then we can maybe have a better feeling once, once we see all of this stuff in a nice, uh, nicely stacked pile that we can give, show to the citizens, and they can come and listen to it.
My only thought is, um, we're trying to get these positions, this transition done, at least one or two of these new trustees on board as soon as possible, and so that's why I was thinking, if we had a, if we had the target that we're all looking at, whether it's five or seven, uh, then in our planning over the next few weeks, we'll know, we'll know where we're trying to head.
Mr. Nicolason, when do you, when is, when do you have in your mind, we might have a full board and all the commissioners would be off this board?
Mr. Laird, I don't know.
Year, two years, three years? I mean, what are we looking at here? I'm just curious what everybody's thinking. Because if, if, if you, if you can't answer the question, I think we oughta just leave the statute as it is, and then deal with it as we go along.
Mr. Madam Attorney, let me ask you a question. Does the county, does the, does the county commissioners have the authority, um, to fill these positions as we go and have the new board adjust this down the road? I mean, we know we have to have five, currently we have five, so we're in compliance. If we, if we have, just say we have a couple of the commissioners that choose to, to vacate those positions, and we fill those, um, can we, can we do that legally? I mean, or do we have to have a specific set number? Because every one of our other boards, um, we do have set, you know, at five. And I, and I understand what, uh, what Mr. Nicolason's saying, and as far as transition goes, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a horrible thing, but I'm, but it, it's just a matter of, um, moving through things.
Chairman, I mean, I think the Board of County Commissioners determine, you just have to have a minimum of five. I think the Board of County Commissioners can determine to expand the board and, and add additional members now or down the road.
Okay.
I don't, you know, our preference would be to just use the statutory language so that they don't have to be changed when, if you do determine that you're gonna add or take away members.
Okay, that, that answers my question, so basically, the county commissioners can choose at a later date if we wanna increase this number or if we wanna reduce it.
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that what I just said?
Yes.
A few times, uh, is it appropriate to make a motion at this point?
Hold, hold on, let me see what Commissioner Millen.
So, you've add, raised more question to me, so it's the county commissioners that choose the side of, size of the board, not the Board of Trustees or any other outside board? It's the Board of County Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Millen, I believe so, because the, the commissioners are the ones that appoint the trustees, so I, I think they would determine the, the size and the members.
The board, uh, whatever it is, library, fair, this board has no say in what size it is?
It's on the statute.
I don't know if historically.
Statute says five to nine.
I don't know historically how that's gone, um, I, so I, I couldn't answer that, trustee Millen. But I, I do know the commissioners appoint the members, so I believe the commissioners are the ones that determine the size.
Correct. But I, I was under the impression, I guess it's never been, that would be a, an interesting research project, and I guess, statutorily, what, who is in charge of how large a board is?
That, that being said, I would, I would like to just leave the statutory language as is for right now.
Mr. Chairman, would be the safest thing to do.
If we leave it as a statutory language, can we add some verbiage that it requires an odd number of more members? Even number of, um?
Could you speak up, I can't quite hear you.
Sorry, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking if you leave the statute as is between five and nine, can we have some sort of clause in there that states that it requires an odd number of Board of Trustees? Between that five and nine, because if we have six or eight, um, sometimes that complicates decision matters.
It's gotta be what the statute says, Michael.
Okay, but five to nine is five, six, seven, eight, nine.
But I think we could appoint six if we wanted, we could appoint eight if we wanted, but I don't know if that's a good idea.
We can, we.
That was just my request, that's all.
Yeah. Mr. Millen?
So, statute, just like federal statutes, is this, and Wyoming statute specifies a little bit more, county specifies a little bit more, if we incorporate Wyoming statute, that's cool, but alls Michael's asking for is that we, we, we limit it down a little bit even more, we become even more strict, which is what always happens, is the slower, farther down to, you go down government, the more strict it can become. You can't expand, say, we, we couldn't take Wyoming statute and say, yes, but we want eleven people, because it's restricted to nine, but we could restrict it down to five, we could restrict it to seven, we could, we could restrict it to odd number, and that's all Michael's asking for, is that we restrict it down to.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're following into the weeds, this can be done later, let's get this thing done. We could argue about every single word here.
Yes.
Yes, Jim, it's fi- between five and nine, we can, we can figure that out at a later time, it isn't saying we have to appoint the people right now, or that we have to appoint eight right now. We'll do the right thing, but let's get the statutory language right, and then have these, have these rules put into, to play, and then, like a lot of rules, they'll probably need to be tweaked, but we're, we're getting lost in the woods on, on stuff that just doesn't matter right now.
Madam County Attorney, if I remember right, reading through the original charter for the Park Board, that was done in nineteen fifty-seven, and the one that was done again in nineteen ninety-five, if I remember right, the material that was in two-point-one-point-three was actually in there. Is that correct, or do you remember?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't remember for sure with the language was exactly the same.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I again ask you to stick to the relevancy, please, and let's just get this done. What they did in ninety-five isn't in play right now, let's do what we have to do today, um, and, and follow the statutory language. I'd like to make a motion that we follow the statutory language, and that maybe will shorten up the meeting, and we can have the, uh, county attorney put this together with the statutory language, so it's easier to read and not be as confusing, because we all are sworn to follow the statutory language anyway. And we are given some authority here, yes, we could appoint eight, we could appoint five, we could appoint nine, but we're not appointing anybody right now. Let's wait till we decide what we think oughta be right, if it's seven, I don't have any problem with seven either, but let's just get this done, so we can get to the point where we make the right appointments.
Okay.
Go to the statutory language, move this along.
Okay, so we, we have a, a motion to go with statutory language, and a second?
Now, now, for clarification, are we in discussion?
Yes, we're in discussion.
So, is that with respect to this provision, or is that with respect to the whole thing?
It's with respect to the whole thing.
See, I, I didn't know if the second followed that motion or followed it with respect to this. Paragraph.
This paragraph, just this, this.
Okay, so we only have, that's only for this.
You're, you're only going on one paragraph, you wanna do it on every paragraph in here, to follow the same rule?
I wanna get on to the next piece of this, if we need to go down to that.
My thought, here, here, let, for purposes of discussion, here's my thought, follow the, follow the statutory authority, and then have the county attorney put that together, and then we come, then if we can, if they can do that tonight, maybe they can, they've got it on, they've got it on their computer, it's just a few pages, so if they put, if they took a copy of this with the statutory authority, because let, let me take a look like paragraph two-point-two, the board shall, that's page three of eight. Uh, the board shall subject, subject to Wyoming law, and these bylaws have the exclusive power too. Now, there'll have to be a little editorializing there, then to start in administering properties under this section, the board may pursue it to Wyoming statute eighteen-nine, uh, nine-twenty-one, two-oh-one-A, do the following, and it just says, adopt reasonable rules and regulations, which is something we need to do, is adopt the reasonable rules and regulations, but if we wanna get in here and start arguing about which reasonable rules and regulations we're gonna adopt tonight, we're never gonna get there. We could also do this by just simply adopting that we, that we follow the Wyoming statutes that have to do with this, uh, particular board, and, and then, uh, and then incorporate some of these things that Peter's talking about and everybody's talking about into the rules. But to to try to figure out which ones are conflicting and which ones aren't, seems like a waste of time, because we are bound by the statutes. And my, my motion, I thought when I made it, was we just, we follow the Wyoming statutes and, uh, as written by the Wyoming legislature, which I think is the shortest, easiest way to proceed in this matter. And I know Mr. Nicolason may have other thoughts, and I'd like to hear him if he does. He's smarter at this than I am.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't think we've had a second, so my, um, motion I'll make at this point is to use the statutory language for this section. Two-point-one-point-three.
Add second. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we will replace that with statutory language.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the county attorney. So, are all of the yellow items that are in this set of bylaws prepared by your office, are those the stat, the, the Wyoming statutory language word for word?
Yes, they should, they should be, I think the Commissioner Laird, or trustee Laird, I'm sorry, the only one that was, uh, slightly different was in Article One, which you've, um, already, I think you've already approved, but I believe all the remaining highlighted provisions are the exact verbatim language.
So, would it be a savings of time if we, in your opinion, for your, from your legal analysis, to have a motion where we just, I don't even know why we need to make a motion to follow a statute, but we'll make a motion to follow all of the statutes that are presented, and then will it be any difficulty for you to go through and, and, uh, leave the statutory language in and editorialize so that it has a flow to it? Because I think that's what I was thinking we were gonna do tonight.
If, if that's, trustee Laird, if that's what the board decides that, yeah, that, there's no problem for us to do that.
So, my, my, my thought here is that, uh, on a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, is, is that we, we follow the statutory language in these bylaws as, as a setup in the yellow paragraphs, now to go through them is fine, but, because we may need to, Mr. Nicolason may see something in there that doesn't quite follow the right road there, but I think rather than to go through each one of these and try to verify the statutes with a motion, is a waste of the commission's time. So, I would, I would, I would move that we adopt all the statutory language in all the pages here, and I forget, there's eight pages, and, and then, and then carry on our discussion as we go through them to determine, uh, maybe what, how they need to be edited, or how the, the non-statutory language needs to be edited. Does that make sense?
So, you're saying, basically, if it's, if the statutory language replaces the stuff that's not statutory with statutory language, and then we will go through and edit the other additions?
And there may be. And there may be some language in there that didn't have anything to do with the statute, may need to be left. But from the standpoint of the premise of, uh, like we just dealt with here on Article One, it basically said the same thing as, uh, Article One had been, that's in black on white. And so, so however, I noticed a couple places where there's an introductory piece of language that isn't statutory, that probably doesn't have to be statutory, that just introduces the statute, if you're following what I'm saying.
I do.
And I think that would save us a whole lot of time if we did that, rather than each page go and have to make a motion to put the statute in, and do that. So that's my motion. Well, I think, whatever you guys wish on that. All I want to do is not have to sit around here and talk this about the statutory language, and try to interpret it and all of that, that isn't what we're doing here. What we're doing here is we're adopting some bylaws that carry the force of Wyoming law, and we're adopting the Wyoming statutes in that regard. Now, there are things we may put in rules that, such as seven members, or something like that, that, that I'm not talking about right now. I think that's, that is another discussion. I just wanted to, to, it's, it's really simple. We're adopting Wyoming law, that's it. And I, I think you'll see that'll save us a lot of time. We'll still go through it page by page, and see what we have to do, if anything, with introductory language. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion on that, or a second on that motion? We have no second on that motion? So. With that, with that, we'll move down to two point one, five?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Don't mean to interrupt, but I think I can help move this one along.
Okay.
Uh, Chairman, um, I think that the statutory language, uh, would be acceptable and is substantially the same as what, um, we formerly had. Um, I prefer the statutory language here, but I don't think it's correct to be sued, sued under the name of Board of Trustees of Nitrona County. We've got to say, um, uh, Nitrona County Parks Board of Trustees, because we have a lot of, I, I think otherwise it, it could be confusing. So we've got to have the word parks in there somewhere, so I, I'd leave it to counsel for that. But otherwise, I would make a motion to, um, uh, this is another one that isn't verbatim statutory, because the word Nitrona County is not in the statute, but
Okay, so.
But otherwise, with that little correction, um, I would move to adopt that language.
Okay, so for clarifications, at the end, we want to scratch Board of Nitrona, or Trustees of Nitrona County and say, Nitrona County Statutory Board, or Nitrona County Parks Board?
No, Mr. Chairman, that, I think with the, it's, it's a mouthful. What the certificate, Certificate of Organization says is the Board of Trustees of the Nitrona County Parks and Recreation System. So, that, that would be the, probably the official title of the board.
Then that's what we need to put in there?
Yeah.
Okay, if we can do that, okay, then we're good. All right, did, we have a, we have a motion? We have a second?
Discussion. Discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Um, I don't know if it matters or not. I'd like to hear people's opinion. That first sentence of the section that we're replacing with the statutory upon initial appointment, the board shall organize by electing a chairman, secretary, and treasurer. While it's in there, uh, is curious if we want to reference section two point three like the original did, or if we just leave that out? It could be incorporated in a sentence below the statutory, uh, language? Or just by it, in, in the bylaws, is, is it just sufficient at that point?
I, I, I think it's clear that if, if it says secretary, then you go look in the other part of the document, and you see what those two things are.
I agree with that, I just wanted to make sure.
Because it's incorporated, I think we're good. So, okay, so, those should be the only changes that we have. Okay, do we have any other discussion on that? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right. Two point one, point six.
Here, two point one, two point one, point five?
No, we just did that. Switched this. There's, so we're down.
You know, I just read something there, by the way, Mr. Chairman. It says, as soon as the original board has been appointed, they shall organize by electing a chairman, secretary, and treasurer now. So the original board has to be appointed.
We were, that's what we did, that's what we did.
Oh, that, oh, the original board, okay.
That's the original board, we got the original board. So that is taken care of.
Sorry.
So. Certificate has been filed.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
On two point one, point six, the, the language that's original, and what, with the statutory language, I'm not seeing where statutory replaces the original. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman? Trustee Millen, I, yep, I, I noticed that too, I'm sorry. Um, I think we were trying to fit these in, and we didn't quite get every mark here, so.
So my suggestion would be to actually add the statutory language to the bottom of the original language, maybe? I don't, you know, what do you all think about that?
Mr. Chairman, so two point one, point six is actually almost verbatim, uh, eighteen nine one oh two subsection D. I think the only thing that we're missing is that the, within the statute, it says the board may pay the secretary such compensation as proper for secretarial accounting and other services.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Heather, if we're simply going to, which we're going to have to do, follow the rules of the state, do we really need this, this kind of set of bylaws? Don't we just need a bylaw that we file the rules of the state of Wyoming? That's set forth in the, whatever period of statutes that have all of this? Clearly, there's another way of doing this that I think we overlooked.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Laird, that, we've just prepared bylaws based on other boards, so that the board could decide what they want in it and what they don't want in it.
Do they just put in there they're going to follow the statutes?
No, they're
Yeah.
They're in the computer here.
So, so I saw some very short set of bylaws. The bylaws are just the rules which say, here's the statutes we follow, basically. The rules of operation are quite different, and I think we have a set of those floating around here somewhere. So I'm trying to think, why would we, why would we need in a bylaw, why would we have to re-recite the statutes of Wyoming in a bylaws? Rather than just say, bylaw number one, this board is hereby constituted based upon such and such statutes, and are hereby required to follow those statutes that's set forth in other legislature. I mean, that's just a general statement. And then, then, then we can go to the next bylaw, which wouldn't. I'm just looking for not having to keep repeating a bunch of, uh, statutes that appear to me to just be, I mean, they are what they are. We can't change them. I don't know. I mean, I took two or three courses in statute construction, it's been a long time ago, but the professors always said, you got to follow the statute, and you just either footnote it, or you, or you say, you just refer to it in the heading of the, what you're doing. I think we've let this one get away ahead of us. It's like telling the deputy sheriff, giving him a big thick stack of book with all of the statutes in it, and says he has to follow them.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to include the Wyoming State statute highlighted with the original language of two point one, point six, so.
Second.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed, so we will add the statutory language at the bottom of two point one, point six. All right, we are over on page three.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to replace one, the original language with Wyoming State statute as highlighted for two point one, point eight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on that?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I, I'm not sure. The statutory language seems a little archaic to me. Um, it reads, if we, as a county, are without title to sufficient land. So that means if, if we don't have fee ownership, rather than, I guess, lease, although, anyway, so fee ownership to enough land, then we can get more. I, I think for me, that's a problem, because I, one could say that government doesn't need, donate any land. One, and so, we have sufficient land at zero. One could say, well, we have a thousand acres, that's got to be sufficient. But if something is, um, in the community's, citizen's best interest, and it's, you know, ten acres, and somebody wants to donate to us, what I'm concerned with in the statutory language, I've always been concerned with this particular provision, um, subsection, uh, well, one oh two F, is what it, what, what standard might have to be met in a year, or ten years, or twenty years? And are we going to be arguing, or is somebody besides me going to be arguing over whether we have, as a county, sufficient land? And therefore, we're not able to either acquire by purchase or acquire by gift? I, I think we might be, um, hamstringing future counties. Uh, so I, I would prefer actually, in this case, to, um, stick with the original language.
I'm going to chime in on this, because I think we need to go with the statutory language on this as well. It's set for a specific reason, and I understand what you're saying, but, uh, at the same time, it doesn't say that the county commissioners, we are allowed to accept land. We are allowed to purchase land, and we can always put that into our park system ourselves. We can always put that as part of the park system. So, we do have that ability as county commissioners, not just as the Parks Board. So I do, I do agree that we need to replace that with the statutory language. So, any other?
The statutory language says something totally different than, than what, it's, the, the language above the statutory language, it gives the county to approve if they want to get it. There's a little situation in this, in the, uh, uh, statute, is if a county is without title to sufficient land. They have the sufficient land, may not have the sufficient land. But if you don't have title to it, then you may acquire it. And I think, I think that's, here's another deal. If you don't want to follow the statute, fine. If you do want to follow the statute, fine.
That's what we're saying, we're going to go with the statute, so.
Well, that's what you said.
Well, that's what Jim said, that's what Jim said, that's also Casey's second, so.
All right.
So. Yeah, yes, we are. Yes, that, if, we don't have any other discussion on that. We have, uh, we have a motion and a second to adopt the, the statutory language under two point one, eight. All in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that does, we will move forward on that. So two point one, eight, we will replace with the statutory language, and get rid of the language above it.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
This is lawyer stuff, so bear with me, okay? We can't adopt a statute, anyway. The statute says
No, we
we're bound to follow it.
We're adopting
This is my point, we're bound to follow these statutes. And I don't know why we get to the point where we think we have to adopt a Wyoming statute. That is the law, that's what it is. If you don't like it, then too bad. We'll get the legislator to change it. But adopting the statute is not what we're doing. We're just saying, we're going to follow the statute, which we're already bound and required to do by our own.
All we're doing is saying we're adopting the statutory language.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but it's, to me, it's a huge waste of time, because we have to do it the way the statute says.
So. All right, down in two point two, there shouldn't be any changes, because everything is statutory there? Uh, Mr. Millen?
Question for, uh, county attorneys. So it looks like you're, you added, try and compare the two, unfortunately, because not quite the same on the red, this red line is the, um, the one we're looking at. So you, you included administering properties under the section, the board may pursuant to Wyoming State statute eighteen nine. So I don't, I didn't see that in there, I just, you guys add, just added that, right? Portion to it, just a little bit? And then
Mr. Chairman, yes, Commissioner Millen, I believe, or Trustee Millen, I believe that's correct.
Adjusted two point two, point one, according to the statute, not, and just, so we didn't have any reference, you just went ahead and replaced that portion with what we had?
So, Trustee Millen, the, the non-high, the non-highlighted language, I think, was the original language you had in, in the previous draft.
That's what I'm saying, is, is the original two point, two point one isn't in this. But it's on my red copy, red line copy. And there's just a little bit difference, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're I'm, I'm understanding everything, all the changes that you all made.
I, I think that, um, the addition of the county parks, I think that language is, um, essentially the same as, as what was in there.
It looked pretty, pretty close to the same things.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then same for, uh, two point two, point two, is, is you just drop that in there with the, the Wyoming statute number in the front?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay. Um, and just for, just for, uh, you, when you fix this, uh, you need to put a, drop a dot in, or a point between two and one, and a two and a two on those two.
Oh, thank you, yep, good catch.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Question for county attorney. Uh, duties and responsibilities of Board of Trustees. You can follow me here on page three?
Yes.
Says the board shall, board shall, subject to Wyoming law, and by these laws have the exclusive power too. And then it says, in administering, administering properties under this section, the board may. Why is there a difference there between shall and may? That's a big difference.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, Trustee Laird, that, the non-highlighted language you referred to, the board shall, that, that would just was in the original, um, draft of the bylaws that you looked at the last time. You can strike that and just use the statutory language, which is the highlighted portion.
So if we, if we use, if we, if we didn't change that, the, the, the board would say they shall have to do something where the statute only says they may do it in their discretion, right?
I think so.
Okay, so, was there a major conflict there between the statute and the, and what's in here?
So here, once again, I make a motion to follow the statutory language in two point two.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
That's everything under, Mr. Chairman, everything under two point two?
Basically, we just remove the first line that's not highlighted, and we would adopt everything that's underneath that that's highlighted.
And the remaining stuff, uh, that's not highlighted?
Everything else under two point two.
Like, but two point two point three, hire and terminate Parks Director, two point two point four, allocate money, expend, that stuff stays in?
We're only gonna go down to two point two, and then we'll talk about the other stuff.
Well, well, that was, that was why I jumped in, is because when we say two point two, that means everything else until we get to, well.
Two point, two point two one. So basically, everything in two point, we strike the first, we strike the first line, and then we adopt everything down.
To two point two point one?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then we will talk about two point two two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is everybody on board with that? Okay.
Second?
Yeah, we got a second. Okay.
What was the motion?
To adopt, to strike this, this line.
Okay.
And adopt this all the way down to here.
Okay.
Okay. Yes. Yes.
Inclusive of the administering properties under the section Board Pursue, blah, 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 blah.
Yes, the highlighted stuff, okay?
It's just a formatting, we'll change the formatting.
Okay.
So then the two point, two point, two point one goes up in front of in administering, and then that will help.
Yeah, and I'm taking notes too, so we can go through this.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm probably early, I'm looking at two point two point threes where I have.
You're too early.
So.
We're not, we're not there yet, we're not there yet.
You're close, you're close, so.
We're not quite there yet, so, okay. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of striking the, the pair, the first sentence under two point two. And keeping the statutory language that is highlighted down through the bottom of two point two one. Say aye. Okay, all opposed, all right, so, all right, so we got that covered. All right. Two point two two. I think we need to keep all that statutory language as well, because that kinda ties into it, and there's no other language that's associated with it.
We have to keep all the statutory language, Mr. Chairman, but we can keep going through it, line by line. It's, do we keep the other language, that's the issue?
I'll make a motion to, um, add that two point two point two, um, to this, two point two section.
Okay. Got a second, by?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, two point two two?
This right here, yep, just that line right there.
Yeah, 'cause it's.
We're adding that to this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so moved, so we're keeping two point two two that's highlighted.
There's a statutory language, please say that.
Is it, yeah, that's the statutory portion of it, okay. All right, two point two three. We have statutory language that says. Eighteen W, Wyoming statute eighteen dash nine dash two oh one. And it says, employ train supervisors and direct director of recreation. Um, that is what the statutory language says versus the stuff that was put in here that says, hire and terminate Parks Director. And oversee all operations, including hiring, firing staff, and provide report for Parks Board. Is this where you had something?
Yeah, so I understand this is statute, but it reads employee trained supervisors. Employee, employee trained supervisors and directors of recreation. But when you go to page seven, Article Four of the Parks Director. These Parks Director shall administer, administer directives and policies adopted by the Board, employ, terminate, direct, and supervise staff members. So the way I read two point two point three is the Board hires directors and supervisors. But the way Article Four reads, the Director hires all staff underneath the Director. So, is the Board gonna be hiring the infield supervisors, or is that fall underneath the Director?
And you're asking what the meaning of that is, that the non statutory language?
No, the statutory language says that the Board will employ trained supervisors and directors of recreation.
And what is, do you have a problem with that?
Well, I just need clarification, is the Board going to be hiring, hiring subordinate supervisors underneath the Parks Director? Or will the Parks Director do that under Article Four? The statute also doesn't talk about any termination by the.
Is there, is there something more to that statute, Heather? Uh, eighteen nine dash two oh one, A three, is there another?
No, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, or Trustee Laird, that, that's what it says, it's just that.
So, so when it's listed in the statute. Is there any discussion in there about hiring and terminating the Parks Director?
No, it just states what it says right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm actually more comfortable with our language than the state statute, um, for purpose of this, uh, bylaws. If we wanna somehow incorporate the state statute number or something like that to reference as far as, uh, employee director. That's cool, but I, I, I still say we can, we can, um. Make our bylaws or whatever within the county more stringent than what is given by state statute. And this does, would end back the case for this one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mill, I think we can do that, but we do it under a different set of rules, it's not a bylaw. I mean, we have rules, all kinds of rules on employment and everything in our county, but they're not bylaws, they're not the, it's not the law of the land. It's, then what we do is we formulate, I mean, that, that one could be in one of our rules.
I think it, it's perfect.
But I don't, but I don't think it's, I don't think that it's proper, uh, because it, it expands on the statute.
I do believe it does fit within the bylaws, as this is the guiding document for this Board.
Well, and then it's a matter of, what does it mean when you say employ trained supervisors and directors of recreation? What does that mean, what does that mean to you, Michael?
It means that they'll hire the Director as well as any subordinate supervisors.
And you're the, and you're the Director?
But it, correct, at this time I am. But it doesn't allow the Board to terminate the Parks Director at any time, so, so is the employee, the Parks Rep, Director in perpetuity, or how's that work? I mean, obviously, I don't wanna be terminated, but, you know.
I think there's another set of rules that apply to that, is my point. There are the rules called employment at will in Wyoming for employment, uh, in, in governmental agencies.
Correct.
So, we, we can't, we can't toy with that stuff.
The, the airport Board's bylaws read, read similar, that they can hire and terminate the airport manager. So, I'm looking at other Board, um, bylaws, it, it appears that way, that's why I'm asking.
There's been a lot of things done where the statutes have been overlooked in Wyoming.
I just wanna know whose authority, if I can hire.
Hold on a minute, Michael, I got a question. Um, can we put this down, down under Article, Article Four? Where we talk about not only the, the Parks Department Director, but move that down there where he's, that's where he is hired and, and, uh, and supervised by the. By the Parks Board, or by the statutory Board itself, and that, then you go down below that and just, just move that, that statement down there. To Article Four instead of having it in two point two. Good, Mr. Nicolason.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. So, if we, we need to have Article Four. And that kinda specifies what the Parks Director is supposed to be doing, and, but the relationship, what the authority is, and responsibility, and relationship with this Board would be. So I think we've gotta have Article Four, and we'll talk about the details in a minute, but first, sticking with two point two point three. Statutory language says employ, um, that, I think. I don't think there should be any argument that that means hire or fire, and set wages and benefits and all that. So I, I think we don't need to necessarily say hire and terminate, I think employ is actually broader, and I, I like that statutory word. Um, what I, I guess, picking up on a point, um, Director Brown was mentioning a minute ago, is. The statutory language gives us broad authority in this case, not only to employ, but to employ multiple people, supervisors, plural, directors, plural. I, I don't think we wanna do that, so I think a hybrid here is entirely appropriate, and is entirely consistent with the statute. If we were to say, employ a Parks Direct, the Parks Department Director, period. And then, we deal with some of the detail in Article Four.
Should, should. Um, here again, you know, uh, it sets us up for an issue, especially in employment case, where your rules don't follow the statute. And it could be a problem down the line.
I don't think so, I, I'm interrupting, I'm sorry.
And so, my only thought is, Mr. Nicolason, is some of these things. The statutory authority we're giving do allow a certain, certain, uh, movement. Now, the movement, to me, would be in rules that we provide, not in the bylaws of how you run the entire organization. If we wanna say that you can hire people and they can only work here four years, I think we can do that. But I don't think that, that we can change a statute, I think that some of this stuff isn't technically a bylaw. And so, there are rules, and I, I haven't completely reviewed those rules, I think probably you have, but they're, they're more of, uh. You, you don't need a statute to say, well, if a guy falls down on the job, they have to call an ambulance for him. I mean, that's a known fact. But these are just statutes or general rules required, that we're required to follow by law, period. And to change one of them, I think we're asking for a problem.
We're not in violation of the statute by, um, using the language, uh, that would be employ a Parks Department Director. And so I'll make a motion to adopt that language for two point two point three.
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
Discussion would be, I'll give you an example. Let's say you pass that, and then somebody decides to, to fire the Parks Director, based on that. And they come to some good lawyers I know, they're gonna see that in there and say, where does it say this Board can do that?
Do what?
To fire a Parks Director.
That'd be part of the employment of the Parks Director.
Well, but, but, but they, but they wouldn't find your language in the statute.
The word employ is in the statute.
Well, it says, employ trained supervisors and directors of recreation.
Correct.
It doesn't say fire. You're giving them.
Any blacks dictionary would.
In a, in the bylaw, you're giving them an extra legal power. Now, maybe you could do it in a rule, the rules of this organization, but I don't think we can, I don't think we can, um. Think, I think Wyoming statute, and if you looked, Heather, I don't know if you guys have looked, under that statute, to see if there's been any case law. Interpreting that, or any lawsuits involved with that, because the one place is pretty sacrosanct in, uh, in government. Is how, how someone can be fired, or whether they can be fired, or whether they have to be fired with cause, or whatever nature. I don't think we should give any Board, any authority to fire anybody unless it's for cause, not just, we didn't like your necktie, you're gone. I think that's a commissioner's duty.
Reading through this, um. Now, I'm looking from a, from a different set of, I wanna say rose colored glasses are more like yellow ones, so I can see better at night. Employ trained supervisors and directors of recreation. That is not necessarily just the Director, but if you branch out and you have additional supervisors. Yeah, that, that is something that you can say that you're looking for trained, that way you have input on that. It's not saying that they have to have the final say, but at the same time, it may be something where the Board is the one that would like to be part of that interview process. And I do, I'm inclined to leave the statutory language like it is. And actually move two point two, three portions of that. I'm not, I'm not saying take out Article Four, so don't, don't misunderstand that. What I'm saying is, you add that into the authority of the, of the Board over the Parks Director. Because it talks specifically about the Parks Department Director then, and you, that's where you could incorporate that.
You change the statute?
No, no, I'm not changing the statute.
You're, you're confusing me.
Mr. Chairman, I have concerns over moving that to Article Four, because this is specifically under the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Trustees. Where Article Four is specifically about the duties of Parks Department Director. And, and I feel like there's a lot of confusion if you put duties of the Board underneath that, um, you know. Because it's not specifically under duties and responsibilities of the Board of Trustees.
My thoughts are, I like the original language we had, however, I would like to see. Portion of it were to strike and provide reports to the Parks Board, and instead of that, put in there, say, but in accordance with Wyoming statute eighteen nine. Two oh one, A, so, so it's just, just a hybrid of what we're talking about here.
Um, Mr. Coats, the only, um, concern I had about having any of this oversee all, all operations, including hiring, firing staff, and providing reports is. It's a little redundant, depending upon what we leave in Article Four, which I actually think is the place where we're defining what the depart, the develop. The Parks Department Director is to do. So, that was my only thought there.
General, we seem to be at an impasse.
Motion, second on the floor right now.
Are we still, are we still talking about it a little bit?
Yes, we are.
No, no, just a statement on that, no amendment.
So.
Wouldn't do that to you right now, it's confusing enough.
No, 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 no. I never heard amendments being brought up.
So, Michael, could you get up by the microphone, I have a question?
Yes, sir.
So, it says, these are the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Trustees, which is to, under the statute, um, would be to. Uh, employ trained supervisors and directors of recreation, does that change your situation?
Well, the way I read that is then, my subordinate supervisors, which I have two, would be hired and fired by the Board of Trustees.
Are they considered directors of recreation?
There's only one Parks Director.
So, employ trained supervisors, so those are employed now?
Yeah, yeah, and they're.
So, and so.
Interviewed and hired by the Parks, by staff.
So. So, following the statutory language. The Commissioners don't hire any of your people, right?
No, just the Parks Director.
So, under this statute, the way I would read it, you would be the one they would hire? And then, I, I, I think they're assuming here a meaning for directors of recreation. And I don't know.
I read it supervisor and director.
Yeah, it says that, but I don't know what a director, we don't have a director of recreation, do we?
We have a Parks Director. So Parks, our Parks Department, this is the Board of Trustees for the Natchitoches County Parks and Recreation System. Um, on that note, I see that several places it refers to Parks Department Director. With this Board of Trustees, will this continue to be a Parks Department of the county, or does that need to be changed to just Parks Director? That's referenced several places. On, uh, Trustee Coach's note, um, I know he has a motion standing, but if I have any input on that. I'm just wondering, after Trustee Nick Lason mentioned, could it? on that, I'm just wondering after trustee Nick Lason mentioned, could it read hire and terminate a parks director in accordance with this state statute? That's it. Take all the terminology of responsibility, which is in Article four, out of this.
We're sorry.
It's back here. It's back here.
That's just my opinion. You guys have an open motion. I'll lead you to it.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I think what we have and what we may want and how we may over time develop the directors duties is really critical. And I'd, I'd like to see us have that Article four. Um, I, I note that the airport board has a nearly identical Article four in its bylaws. Um, so my, my feeling is, and that, that we need to keep Article four and, and just delineate the general, the general duties.
I, I don't have any problem with keeping Article four. That's not, that's not what I was, I wasn't saying get rid of that. So I, I agree with that, uh, that we need to keep Article four.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would respectfully call the question.
Do we have two thirds on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, what was the final?
Employ a parks department director.
Okay.
I would move that we, uh, that we abide by the statutory language.
Well, we've already got a motion.
And the question's been called.
And we've got, so we.
We have a motion that includes.
In the second, yeah, we've already got a second and the question's been called, so we can't add anything at this point in time. So we, we will hire, say, say that one more time, please. Just. Employ a parks. Okay. So we will strike everything that's not highlighted in two point two point three and put employ a parks, parks department director. Okay, we have the motion. Is that the one you seconded?
I'm not sure. Now, what else do you want to leave in that? Are you taking out hire and terminate, or what do you?
The rest of it's going to be gone.
So how do you, how do you see that that's different than the statute saying employ trained supervisors?
Mr. Chairman, the question's been called. And by the way, Commissioner Laird or Mr. Laird, we're using the statutory language.
Yeah. So, all right. We have that. We have all in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. It has been carried. All right, two point two four, allocation of money is expended. Um, everything in there is statutory, so I don't see any change in that. Does anybody else have any requested changes in that, that language?
Please.
Just follow, already said, just follow the statutes?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, two point two one five.
Wait a minute, is that agreed upon?
Is it? I don't think we need to have a motion if it's already in there. If you guys want to, we can.
That's what I'm trying to do.
We haven't changed, we haven't changed anything. So as we're just leaving it the same. So we don't have to have, if we're just leaving it the same.
Well, but we've added from what we did at our last meeting and because of what we've been doing, I would just make a quick motion.
Okay.
To adopt these, these changes.
Okay, and two point two point four.
Correct.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now we are at two point two point five. Did, did you get that? Michelle, that, okay. All right. Sorry. Yeah. Two point two point five, consult with the direct and direct the parks director on matters affecting the parks, facilities, program and services. Any requested changes on that?
Now, that's what we talked about last time?
No, Michael's got something to say.
I just feel we should standardize whether we say parks director, parks, parks department director. It's noted different places, different ways.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Heather, County Attorney, can we document exclusively in one motion, make it one way or the other?
What do you mean?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Mel, you mean the reference to parks department's director or parks director?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, I believe you can.
Okay, so.
Make that motion, will you?
What do y'all want?
Make the motion. I don't.
Okay, so I make a motion. What do you want? Okay, so parks director. For the whole freaking thing.
The whole document, second?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I don't think we should add the word fricking in there though.
He made a, he made a friendly amendment. I finally got a laugh in here. Even Nicolason got a smile on his face. At least I used fricking.
All right.
God.
Okay, um, two point two point six. I would recommend that we use the statutory language on this. I think it covers us a little better.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, I like both. Um, I, I like the statutory language. Um, but I do like the idea of the parks board advocating on behalf of the county for community support of the recreation programs and services. I think that's still well within the, um, guardrails of the statutes. Um, but I, I like that concept and I'd like to set this board up with kind of a nudge that that direction is, is a good way to go and take care of what we've got in terms of parks.
Yeah, personally, I think the last, last part of that sentence says that, but that's my personal feeling, opinion. So in the statute, so.
I'd make a motion to leave it as shown with both the original language and the statutory language.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did you get that? We're just adding that. Okay. Anything on two point two seven? Let me go really fast.
It's the same agreed upon language as last time, as the last meeting.
It hasn't changed. There are, there are no highlights in it. So that's two point two seven. From two point two seven down to two point three two, we don't have any changes in the statutory stuff. Uh, and I know Michael's got something to say.
I just wanted to, so two point two six, the statute there reads very similar to two point two point nine. So I don't know if that's a redundancy and two point two point nine could be cut from the bylaws?
Ooh, nice catch. I can live with that. Anybody else okay with that? Do we have a motion to strike two point two nine?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to take that statutory language that we just added to two point two point six. And that sentence that begins, the recreation board shall manage, operate, regulate, um, and put that in as the new two point two point nine.
That work?
Yeah, that works.
That's my motion.
Second.
Third.
Okay, so we're just moving the statutory language that was in two point two six, replacing the language that was in two point two nine with the statutory language.
Correct.
That was underneath two point two six. Got that? The phone maker. Okay, all right. Anything else, Michael, that you spotted? You seem to be doing really well tonight.
What's that? I do have a question.
Let's do this motion first, Michael, please.
Yeah, so.
Which motion?
All right, we have the motion. We have a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Oh, I have a, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. When I read this, this last set of items dealing with money, uh, where in it, where here, does it say that we have to approve their budget?
Where are you seeing that?
Well, you're, they're saying.
No, I mean, I was asking what number, what letter?
I'm, I'm on page four of eight and it's like here, approve all monthly expenditures, disbursements and authorize the parks director to submit bills for payment to the county clerk. That's the Board of Trustees doing that.
Right there.
There and with the, I'm, I'm, we're supposed to clear beginning, prepare budget.
Yes, and they have to submit the budget to the county commissioners.
Then you have any bids or contracts for the parks department. So if the parks decide they want to build another new building and they approve it, where does it say that, that we may not want to give the money?
That's during the budget.
Go ahead. They have to, their budget comes through the county commissioners and once that budget is approved.
Yeah.
Then that's, that's approved.
Yeah.
And they have the authority to move that money around.
Should it be said a little clearer? Maybe?
Yep.
But ain't the budget that don't mean anything?
Yep.
Pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, my question was on two point two one one. Uh, this changes things a little bit. Uh, currently the parks director, um, authorizes expenditures through our voucher system and submits those to the clerk. This sounds like, uh, the board would review all those and then the parks director would authorize and submit those. Is that the way these boards typically run now? Just needed clarification. Just a change in the system is all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on page four? Two point three one, two point three two.
And the secretary language is all the same, right?
Yep.
Okay, two point three three, trailer, anything on there? Page five. And the $10,000 is what we currently have for requiring. I know there has been some discussion. I talked to Danielle a little bit about that, about possibly reducing that, but I think right now that's, that's where we need to leave it. So.
Nope, that looks good.
How?
Looks the same as what we agreed on, so it's all good.
Okay. Anything, all right, two point two two, resignation and removal. I personally prefer the statutory language here. Mr. Chairman.
Now, that's the language we use for every employment thing we've got.
Yes, for now. Go ahead.
Just for your, your numbering is all squirrely.
What?
I like my terminology.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I like the statutory language as well. The only, um, the only item that isn't covered, uh, what is in our original language is the last sentence on officers. And I, I think that the discussion in our last meeting was just providing some mechanism for removal of officers. So I think that needs to be covered somewhere in the bylaws. I think it has to be. And, and maybe that's the previous, uh, let's see my pages. It is still under officers. It's two point two point one, three. Yeah, it's, it's formatting, it's messed up there up here. So just have to click it. Uh, so yeah, that, my point is that we can use statutory language, uh, as insofar as it does cover members of the board, um, and how vacancies are filled, but it doesn't cover removal of officers, which this whole section is supposed to be dealing with.
I guess my question is, is that if you can remove members of the board, then you can remove members of the officers, officers that are on the board as well. So it's redundancy as far as that goes. So, um, and if, and there are, there are, in the statute, it does say with calls. So if we have calls to remove somebody, it doesn't matter if they're an officer or if they're just a trustee. We have that authority stated clearly that we do have that authority to remove them. And, uh, it goes through. So I'm not really worried too much about whether they're an officer or not. The county commissioners decide that we want to remove somebody for calls, we can do it whether they're an officer or not.
So the, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So the other, I guess, um, the statutory language says the county commissioners can remove a member of the Board of Trustees. The sentence I'm talking about is on officers. And I can envision a situation in which the county commissioners might want to remove someone as an officer, but not as a trustee. Um, maybe they're, they're not as good with money because they, you know, were thought to be and don't need to be a treasury anymore. Maybe they can't see anymore, so they can't be a secretary. I, I don't know. But, but it, the officers, if I, officers may be removed at any time, so there's not a cause, um, element. And it says by the board, that would be the parks board, or by the Board of County Commissioners. So I just think we should be intentional about this. I, I do not think that the statutory language is adequate to cover, um, removal of officers.
Well, it says, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
County Commissioners may remove any, any member of the Board of Trustees. Doesn't make any difference whether they're an officer or not.
If we got, my personal feeling is if we've got a reason to remove them as an officer, then we've got a reason to remove them as a trustee. So.
You can remove.
Yeah.
We have, it doesn't make any difference whether they're an officer or just a member.
That's exactly right. And that's what I'm saying. So I personally.
I think we should just stick with the statutory language and not get bound up in that.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to follow the statutory language. You don't have the floor. Um, so looking at this and how I read it and why, if I remember right, why we added it, isn't, one, we're discussing the officers here. If we're discussing members strictly, would be clear back up here at two point one in that section. With it being talked about as far as officers, the key missing portion of the Wyoming State statute that in my mind is officers may be removed by the board, the parks board, not, I, I'm, I understand your point with the Board of County Commissioners. That's cool. You know, they can remove whoever, um, completely out of there, but the board itself has no mechanism of correction that may be, they may need in the future to remove an officer because he's not showing up or whatever the case being, in order to correct that. And this is the tool that gives the parks board the authority to remove that officer and install a new one. And this is the tool that gives the Parks Board the authority to remove that officer and install a new one.
Me, I think that needs to come back to the county commissioners, and we just need to remove them. If they're not doing their job, then we need to do ours and remove them. And that's the way I see that statute. That's the reason why I support changing it to strictly statutory language. So.
Want to second my motion?
To adopt the.
Adopt statutory language, you go with that. You start.
I'd make a motion to amend.
Well, what he's got, sorry.
Make a motion to amend and include the last sentence of the original language to the end of the Wyoming State Statute, that, of the original motion.
Second.
Wait a minute, that's, that's gotta be a friendly amendment, so you have to agree to that.
Yeah, I don't agree to it. Jim, I think it's redundant, we don't need it.
Mr. Chairman, it's a point of order. I don't think, I don't think friendly amendment concepts is really the issue. I think it's a motion to amend. It's been seconded, there would be discussion on the amendment, and then a vote on just the amendment, and then whether that passes or fails, we then would act on Commissioner, Mr. Laird's original motion that Mr. Coats seconded. I think that's the proper procedure.
I'm going to disagree with you on that, but that's just a point of point of order, but I do believe that we need to vote. Wait, and accept the, we have the motion, we have the second. Mr. Laird did not agree to the friendly amendment.
It wasn't a friendly amendment, it was just a straight up amendment.
Well.
It's all terminology.
Gentlemen, one of the things I hope you can remember is one of the very point in county government, state government, city government, is removing people and having the cause to do it. And I think we should stick with that. And I don't think we should get too funky with anything where now we're taking over, apparently, how the commission themselves want to run their commission. I think that if they want to make a rule when they, when they get in business, that if they don't, if somebody misses three meetings, they remove it. I don't think you can just say we can remove people because we don't like the shirt they wore that day. And so the statute kind of, kind of talks about that, and it gives us the authority to remove anybody on that commission for cause. And so I don't think there's an issue. If they, if the chairman of their board comes here and says this guy comes a drunk for every meeting and all of that, then you have a little hearing, he probably gets removed by us. But it has to be statutorily composed. And I think when you start tweaking these too much, then that gives lawyers arguments to come in here and represent these people to say, well, your rule is in conflict with the statute, and here's a couple case laws, cases that said that, nobody here has researched that deeply, I don't think. So I'm, I'm in favor of sticking with statutes that have been passed. I know I'm not going to have a problem with that later. You want to, you want to get funky language in there, you may have problems with it later, and you probably won't be here anyway, and then let somebody else wonder why we did it. But I think we should stick with the statute, it's my feeling.
It's just too sensitive of an issue.
Madam Attorney, in your opinion, can we add that second part, not, not as an add-on to the statute, but in, in addition to as a separate segment?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm a little confused. What portion are you asking to add as a, an addition?
It's that question, she says it's her opinion, she wins. Spoil on this. Was there a second to your?
Yes, there was.
Yes.
Then you should call for the question. Nicolason's right.
Alright. Never mind. Okay, we'll call for the question for those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
What, which, yeah, which, we're on the amendment, right?
On the amendment to, to the.
Include that last quick sentence, officers may be removed.
Yes, that is all. Yes, we will. So, go ahead. We have not voted on that yet. We haven't.
Yeah.
That's what we're about to vote on, that's what we're about to vote on.
Clarification.
Uh, we, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the problem that seems to be missed is, it says officers may be removed at any time without public hearing. I don't think you can do that. Statutes all say. There doesn't need to be a public hearing, but if somebody says they want a public hearing, they get a public hearing.
They have to have one, and the statute does says that they have to have one if they request one.
So just, so just leave it with the statute, it's my opinion. But I think you're, you're asking for problems here. Especially when you get a couple people don't like each other on a board, and they want to get rid of somebody, say the chairman or the whatever.
Alright, we have motion for the amendment on the table. We have got a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Alright, all opposed?
I oppose it. You're gonna, you're gonna add a sentence to say officers may be removed at any time without public hearing? When the statute says.
No, no, the statute doesn't talk about officers.
They're a member of the board. I think you're reading in between the lines, Mr. Nicolason, I think this is a big problem here.
I don't.
Well, it says it clearly, the county commissioners may remove any member of the board of trustees for cause without a public hearing unless the trustee requests that the action be taken at a public hearing.
Two, two things, Commissioner Laird, respectfully. One is the removal of a trustee, and the other, a distinct removal is of an officer. Two distinct things. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move, or I would call the question on the uh, motion of Mr. Laird and seconded by Mr. Coats, which is having 2. whatever this is, reflect the statutory language, the two sentences that we see in yellow, and then with the addition, with the.
Four sentences. Yeah, there's four.
One.
Two, three, four. Oh, lines, sorry, four, four lines, four lines, four lines. Four lines that are all highlighted under Wyoming Statute 18-9-102-H.
With the addition of the past amended language, which adds the officer's removal sentence. So that's the question, that's what I believe is the motion that is pending that I am calling the question on.
Correct.
That's right, I thought.
Yeah.
So we haven't addressed the issue of the whole statute yet, though, have we?
The statute will be.
So you want the whole statute?
We're now voting on, on this portion of it. We're now voting on this portion of, on the statute. So, we are, the motion is on the floor to adopt the Wyoming Statute 18-9-102-H at his entirety in this section. The motion was made by Commissioner, or Mr. Laird, seconded by Mr. Coats. All in favor?
Well, with the addition of this sentence on officers, Mr. Chairman?
Well, yes.
Right, thank you.
That was already voted on, so. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright.
Chair, Board of Trustees Chair, at this point, I just want to make sure so that we're all following. You adopted, the, the board adopted for 2.22.1 the statutory language of 189102 subsection H. And in addition, I'm a little confused of what we're doing with the sentence regarding officers may be removed.
If I could.
Go ahead.
Alright, so this is actually 2.4.1, not.
Well, sorry, I didn't record.
But what we voted on and Pat just passed, it should read 2.4.1 W. Wyoming State Statute 189102 Sub-H. County Commissioners may remove any member of the Board of Trustees for cause without public hearing unless the trustee requests that the action be taken at a public hearing, vacancies on the Board of Trustees shall be filled by the County Commissioners for the balance of the non-expire term created by the vacancy. Officers may be removed at any time without public hearing by the board or by the Board of County Commissioners of Nushrun County. Clear as mud?
Got it, thank you.
Alright. I would like to add something into that, and I do believe that what we need to do is we need to add that there needs to be cause. Because I do believe that it has to be of some cause, whether it's deficiency and not showing up. If it, if it's something that needs to be, you know, if their behavior or something else is associated with that, I do believe that that, that cause to remove an officer needs to be incorporated in that, that you just can't vote on removing somebody without reason.
Well, for the record, I would agree with that. I think what, what you've done is you guys have put in a sentence that's illegal, it's going to violate somebody's rights, and it's going to get the county sued because there's no standard for the removal. And so if nobody wants to, I would, here's what I want to do to the county attorney. I want you to research the issue, to your convenience, and put it in writing as to whether we can be dismissing people without cause. When the stat, and, and take into consideration this particular statute and what it encompasses. Can you get that done?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, is the board in favor of my doing that?
Pardon me?
I'm asking if the board, if all the members of the board are in favor of my doing that.
Well, the statute allows me to just ask you to do that. But I think it's necessary that we do it to protect ourselves. So you could review the statute to see whether you need the whole board to agree to that. If so, fine. And I know you're asking Mr. Nicolason while I have the floor, and he's speaking while I have the floor. But the point of it is, is I would like to see the legality of it because I think it's, could be a big mistake for the county to say that they can fire people without cause. I'd like to know what the law on the subject is, and if it's an officer, whether you can dismiss an officer, because I'm sure this isn't the first time in Wyoming it's ever come up. So I'm requesting that as a commissioner, pursuant to Wyoming statute, that allows me to do that.
Question, Mr. Laird.
Oh, yeah. So since we're in this point, and maybe it'll help alleviate fears or whatever, uh, I would make a motion to amend the last sentence of 2.4.1 to read as officers may be removed at any time for cause without public hearing by the board or by the Board of County Commissioners of Nushrun County.
Okay. I'll turn on your mic.
Second, Ben.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other discussion on that?
Only. Jim, I don't know what your thinking is, because all of the other people that you give a for cause hearing to have the idea is, is that you can't just have this little hearing among the people on the board, and nobody can know about it. And, and they can do that unless the person who's being removed wants to expose it and have a public hearing. Because many times that changes the whole construct of the matter. So it's like saying, well, we're going to give jury trials to certain people, and other people don't get a jury trial. And I, I think if you're gonna, I appreciate, because I will vote for that. But I think you should also put in there that, that there should be a public hearing for those people. If there's somebody that's a chairman, a bunch of people that have no experience on these, and they all want to remove the guy because of some, because he said something that was under his right to freedom of speech, and they all want to remove him, and they gang up and remove him, he has no chance. And that could happen in this county. Because freedom of speech is not a license like a driver's license. Freedom of speech is a God-given right insured by the Constitution of the United States and the state of Wyoming. And so sometimes people say things that other people don't like. And that isn't enough for cause to remove anybody. But refusing to do your statutory job probably is one. They're not coming there, or they don't want to do the job, or they don't follow the statute, yeah. That's probably a for cause issue. But I still think the person should have a right to a public hearing if they want one.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm concerned that we're elevating the rights of an officer to the statutory rights of a trustee. And I think we're doing that pretty clearly by saying that they can only be removed for cause. And that this, this idea of a public hearing, the officers of these outside boards don't have statutory rights, and we don't, I think, want as a county to be giving them the kind of rights that, or perceived rights are going to get. They're going to talk about bogging down a board's activities if there's a public hearing on this, or if they're trying to prove whether it was or wasn't caused. I think that the rights of the body are protected by majority vote, and that's why if, if the, if this board, if the Board of County Commissioners doesn't like, for example, the Parks Board's removal of, of one of its own officers, then that could be cause to remove that trustee from the Parks Board. Or, you know, not re, not reinstating, but renewing them when their term is, is up, if they're seeking a second term. So I, I think we're really opening up a can of worms with this motion, and so I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
So.
I'm going to be in.
I have a question of the, of our lawyer.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with that statement because I do believe that if you're going to remove an officer, that you need to have a reason, a specific reason, and it does need to be for, for cause. And at that point in time, so I'm going to agree with the motion at this point and second, so.
So, Ms. County Attorney, could you read, so I don't misunderstand myself, I don't want to put you to any work you don't have to do. Would you read the statute that deals with county attorney, or with the commissioner or any other official of the county asking you to do legal research in what it says, please? Just read it into the record.
You'll have to give me a minute to pull up the statute.
So, can I call for the question on the motion that's on the floor and address the sidebar stuff?
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
So I just hit question.
Okay. Do we have majority supporting your question?
That's what I'm trying to get is have this concise.
That's what I'm doing. This is for the question. Do we have a majority that votes for the call the question? Yes, that is what I'm asking. Yes, okay. Alright, with that motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have, that motion has passed that we will put only four calls.
Do you need me to re-read back my question?
Please do that.
Okay, so it will now state, officers may be removed at any time for cause without public hearing by the Board or by the Board of County Commissioners of Nushrun County.
Thank you.
You have the statute there?
No.
You have the statute?
Mr. Chairman? Do you like me to address that?
Yes, yes, you may.
Yes, I do. It's eighteen three two oh two A two. Each county attorney shall give his opinion in writing upon the request of any county officer of his county or counties without fee upon all questions of law related to the duties of such officer, and file and preserve in his office a copy of all such opinions.
So, one person can ask you?
With respect to the duties of that officer, is what it says.
Did you read the rest of the statute?
Yes, I just read it to you.
Well, there's more to it than that. It goes on, it goes on, it, it goes on to how you have to perform your duties. There's more to the statute.
Your question was what I have to?
No, no, you, well, you have to read the whole statute, Madam County Attorney, and then you'll see that it incorporates a lot of other things.
So, so.
And one of your duties are to provide legal advice, right? And I'm asking for some. Were you refusing to do it?
I, no, I'm not refusing to do that. Excuse me, Chairman, um, North Commissioner or Trustee Laird, excuse me.
So we're not having an argument then?
No. I, I was asking, however, if, as I would like the board to give me approval to go ahead and do some of this stuff that doesn't relate directly to your duties, because the question you asked doesn't relate directly to your duties.
Relates to an issue we're doing tonight. This directly relates to a very important issue as to whether we can contravene a state statute and dismiss people without hearings and without any public notice. I would really like to know that before I vote. This is, this is your job, I'm asking you about. And then you're busy talking to Mr. Nicolason and asking him.
Commissioner, I'm not talking to Trustee Nicolason.
Did he send you anything saying you can't, you can't talk to me or anybody else?
No.
Okay, let, let's get back on track here. We're getting close to finishing this, so. Two points.
Where are we with the issue of giving the people a public hearing if they want one? We can't sit here and vote and not give people a public hearing when everybody else gets one.
Let's make the motion.
I move, I move that we allow, what?
No, you can make the motion to either have her look at this, or, or we can make the motion to have a public hearing.
I'm asking her to take a look, she didn't read the whole statute. I, I would like a memo to get, this given to all the commissioners, not just one person, given to all the commissioners to let us know if we're committing a, a problem here legally. Don't you think that would be a good idea for us? Because we're, we're about to pass something where we're taking away a public hearing from somebody.
Can, can we, can we?
I mean, why do I have to fight over getting some information from the county attorney?
That's what I'm going to say. Can we make, can we make the motion that?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Make a motion for five, ten minute break?
Okay, we'll take a short recess.
Good idea.
So, and, yep, and you can, if you'll look that up.
Well, wait, wait. For how much time?
That's your water. Okay, alright, so we are moving on to two point four point two. Anything in there? It is. That's the reason why I'm saying two point. I don't know which number this really is. Conflicts of interest? Anything to change on there? Okay. That will be in a correction to two point five, two point five. Conflict of interest? Down at the bottom of page five. And then we'll have to realign all these numbers. Yes, okay, okay, alright, so that, just so we're on the record that that's done. Compensation? Anything on that in two point six? We haven't got there yet. That's the next one. We're, we're above that one, compensation. So, anything in there that anybody has any issues with?
Is compensation issue? Does compensation issue apply to all of our board members? Around the county? I'm just curious.
I don't know if it does or not.
You know, Heather?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, most of the statutory boards do provide that the trustees won't, do not receive compensation. They can receive reimbursement for expenses.
I know one of our appointees is getting some money from being on a board.
It is, it is a different type of board, however.
Do you think that so it doesn't apply in that situation?
I just know it's not the same as these statutory boards.
So, okay, so this one basically is just reimbursement for, for cost. Is that, anybody see anything different there? Okay, attendance? What is excessive of absences? I have seen everything from three to six meetings. And whether they're conservative, or if it's fifty percent during the year, or what, we need to, we probably should define what, what excessive.
Mr. Chairman, there's a statute on that. About, that applies to us, actually. Like if you're, if you get sick, you're sick for longer than ninety days, then there has to be a decision, or are you going to heal up and come back? And if not, then you have to resign, that kind of thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, I think the reason that there isn't a specified number, or, or this many within this period of time, is that I think, as you indicated, it, it is different in different situations, and what works for one kind of board may not work for another kind, and so I think it's excessive absences, and if it is to be dialed in at a later point, that's, that's maybe for a future board, but for now, it may or may not, you know, be sufficient for cause, which we've just already established. So I, I think that it's going to be one of those points of argument, and, and I don't know how it's going to come out, but I think hopefully it'll be clear. Um, it's gonna be one of those points of argument and, and I don't know how it's gonna come out, but I think hopefully it'll be clear, um, in that situation. So I, I think it's okay for now at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, once again, it leaves it in the discretion of people. There is a statute that deals with it in various areas of, you know, whether people are sick or having problems, different kinds of things where they can't attend. And so if somebody could say three meetings in a row is an excessive. It just, it's, it's just have a, it's a little distinct unfairness to it. I think we should, we should take a look at what an excessive absence would be. How long, how many times is this board gonna meet a year? Do we know?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We. How does, what's the temperature on adding excessive and unexcused absences? Just to be done with this.
Okay.
If that. Add excessive to unexcused absences, excessive and unexcused. So if that, anyone's want to second that?
Mr. Coates, so you're saying excessive and unexcused absences?
Yes.
I'd second that.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on that? Okay. Call for the motion and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Any other items on here? Has anybody has been concerned about?
Are we on to Article three?
Yes.
I think we need to specify how often meetings are gonna be held. I think they should be held monthly, um, at, at, at the beginning. I, I think that's what they're held, being held now. And I think we've got a whole lot going on and maybe even more that could be going on. So I think we should say every month and I don't care what time. If we don't even need to specify the time in the bylaws.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, previous parks board met the second Thursday of the month at five thirty. So I'm sure that vacancy is probably still available for this room if this is where they're to meet. Um. And, and also, um. I prefer them on Thursdays versus Wednesdays. A lot of people have, uh, different religious matters they like to attend on Wednesday nights.
Solid about you.
Didn't say me. But.
I, I would, I, I agree with that. And that's actually what I was gonna recommend is that because people are accustomed to having that second Thursday and with the Parks Board that we, we go with that at five thirty.
That'd be my recommendation to the board.
Any objection to that? Alright. Okay. Anything else? Now that, we will not have a meeting next Thursday. We are not going to start next month. Okay, um. Anything else on here?
Three point three, Mr. Chairman, um. It was brought to my attention that there's a typo, but I think counsel, um, I think counsel's aware of the typo in three point three. So the typo was, um, the chairman of not less than three trustees. So it should be the chairman or not less than three trustees.
Chair. Anything else? Article four. Article four, have Article five. Article six. Seven?
Wait a minute, Article six. So the board so act a sports, the board chairman acts a spokesperson, but what if the, the press wants to talk to somebody else? They're able to talk to them, aren't they?
Then you can talk to anybody, but as the official spokesman, it's, it could be the, the chair or. Uh, the Parks Director. And you can always refer to the Parks Director. It's just saying the official.
And said that.
Well, as a spokesman, so.
I wanna think about that. Other, may have several people. Some people don't like to talk to anybody. Other people like to say things, you know?
That's why you turn it over to the Parks Director.
Fine with me. Nobody cares.
Okay, alright, seven?
That's a, that's a, that's a big one now, Heather. Is this on liability? Now, I don't see the statute there you referred to, the statute. But I don't know how this is worded comparable to the statute, because this would be one you don't want to get a blindside on by anybody.
Mister, or I guess trustee Laird, if you look on page two, under two point one point six, the statutory lang, excuse me, the statutory language is there as well, or I guess there. We can easily put it.
Where is it?
Page two, under, now I lost my pages. Uh, page two, under two point one point six, so the last paragraph, the yellow highlighted is, this refers to the same liability statute for the, in this context.
Okay.
See it?
It's on the bottom.
So do you think it's sufficient to refer to it the way we're doing it? Because it just uses the word responsible and I don't know that that covers. I would say, I would want to see something different. Now, one of the words I'd use is liability.
So.
Cause responsibility is a little different than liability.
It says liable in the statute, so I'd recommend changing that to liable.
Oh, I'd recommend just quoting the statute.
Yeah.
Responsibility doesn't. Doesn't cover liability.
Well, we just dropped everything just pursuant to Wyoming statute eighteen nine.
I think that'd be a good idea.
That word. Say that, say one more time.
No, you need to quote the statute.
Yeah.
I think is what he was saying. Didn't you say that?
No, I just said, just drop everything, just put pursuant to Wyoming statute eighteen nine oh, one oh two, call it good.
Yep. Because that covers it.
Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't cover it if you were being sued right now. You'd want it to say that, uh, that you're immune from any liability or being, uh, for anything that may occur.
Mr. Nick Close.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's highly problematic to have both statements in this document. I, I think that, um. The word responsible is not in the statute. The word liable is. I don't have a strong feeling where it goes, um, but I, I don't think we should, uh. Have it read responsible and I don't think we need it stated twice. So, um, that, those are my thoughts.
Sure. That was my, gonna be my next suggestion. Then if it's already referenced in the beginning of this document as far as liability, then let's just drop Article seven.
That works. Everybody in favor of that?
In favor of using the statute.
Yeah, just drop in seven and we've got the statute already listed, so we're taking that out. Okay, amendment eight.
Which is now seven.
Article eight.
Now seven.
Now seven. I personally would like to see this. Say a super majority and not just a majority.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Looking at the airport bylaws. And they say these bylaws may be amended in whole or part at any regular or special meeting of the board, not less than seven days prior notice of any proposed amendments shall be given to all members of the board. Immediately upon the affirmative vote of a majority of all members of the board, such changes become effective. And so. The, the distinction might not be, um. Well, no, it, that, it would be the same. So it's not just, it's not just who shows up at that particular meeting. So for example, if it's a seven board, uh, Parks Board and only five show up, so you have a quorum. Um, they're not gonna be able to change, uh, well, I guess that still would be a member, a, a majority of all members. So that hypothetical is wrong and I'm sorry, it's getting late, but. I think there's a little bit of protection here that it's a majority of all members of the board, not just those that show up. So I'd like to keep it consistent with what we have for these other outside boards. Thanks.
Yeah, but a majority of all members is basically a quorum. That's all it's saying. I'm saying change it to a super majority so that you can't just do it just because you have a quorum. If you have five members and you have three there, that's a majority and that is a quorum. I say that you need to have at least eighty percent or more to change the bylaws.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mount.
Um. I mean, that's, that's what I'm reading as far as a majority of all members. Your word being, I think, would be all members of the board. It's not talking about a quorum. It's talking about a full board before any changes can be, uh, voted upon. So I'm comfortable with the language as it lies right now. Vote a majority of all members of the board.
But a majority of all members would basically just be a quorum if you only have five people on the board. That's why I'm saying a super majority.
No, if it meant a quorum, it'd say quorum. All members, how do you, how do you phrase all members then?
If you have five members, just as an example, a quorum is three. That is a majority. That's why I'm saying a super majority of at least eighty percent.
So, so I. Are, are we talking about, I guess I'm confused because are you talking about the, the idea that three members of a five-person board hold a meeting and vote? Or are you talking about a five-panel board being required to make that vote? Or are you talking about? Three of the five having to vote yea or nay?
The way this, the way this is written. Basically, you could have a majority of the board, which would only be three if you have five, that could actually do this. That's why I'm, that's why I'm having a problem. That's why I say you need to have a super majority support the change in the bylaws. If you did that, then it takes that, takes that away from that. That way, that way you're guaranteed not just to have a quorum, but you have to have more than a quorum. To vote on the bylaws, which is, which a lot of places do. And when you change those bylaws, you go into it. You can't just change it with just a simple majority. It takes more than that. So.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that maybe we keep consist, some consistency among the boards since seeing as the library and the airport both have that same language. I don't know that, uh, Parks is. Should be on an island in comparison to the rest of our statutory boards.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board then?
I'd make a motion to keep it as we see it, um, here in front of us, which is a majority of all members of the board.
I'll second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. We're done.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Real quick, pertains to this, uh, bylaws. We've got a couple first. Well, we just did tonight. The county, county attorney, they're putting together a clean thing and, and coming back and. Take another pass at this or, or what's the plan or I guess.
Mr. Chairman, um, trustee Milm, I think that's probably the best is for, to let us try to incorporate all the changes and clean this up, um, before you vote on it to make sure it, it does say what you want it to say.
Okay, um, with that being in mind, then, um, I know Commissioner Laird, not trustee Laird, has had problems with this board not having bylaws. I, I've got problems with this board not having bylaws yet too. Um, so as I'm wondering, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board potentially. I'd like to, if, if you can get these done. Um, in a relatively short period of time where we can actually, where it makes sense to hold a, a, a special meeting just to, uh. To, uh, pass the bylaws or, or to, uh, further discuss them a little bit again, then, uh, that would be my, my hope that we do that. Yes. What does that have, I don't, I'm not following down.
So you probably need it there too.
So. But alright, right, right now we're just talking about the bylaws.
Right, so that's, that's all I'm kinda getting at is, is can we kinda try to move this along a little bit faster than?
Mostly should be pretty quick. So how quickly could you get these?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the changes can be made quickly. Um, we can get them to you in the next few days and then you can schedule a, a special meeting if, if you'd like to.
All right.
To adopt them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Mr. M.
This, the second one that concerns these bylaws as well. And I think it concerns this board, concerns the Board of County Commissioners and and the other statutory bo- boards that are out there, the Airport Board, the the Library and whatnot. Is a, is a opinion of yours. That it's the Board of County Commissioners that sets the number of of board members. Can you do if if we all agree apparently? Can you do that research and and or reach out to the AG and find out their opinion or something to give us some background? Because I think it'd be, I think the other boards will find it. Interesting that the Board of County Commissioners sets their memberships.
The number of members?
Okay, yeah, and if you can get that information back as soon as possible, and then we can amend. If we need to, so.
Thank you.
All right, with that. Move into the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Trustees. I'll try to keep this short as we've been here a while. I did present all of you a copy of my notes. Item number one is the area of operations, responsibility and management that the Parks Department oversees. I'll just go through these real quick so you guys get an idea of the extensiveness of this department. Casper Mountain, we have a maintenance shop. Obviously, that is shared with Road and Bridge. They have two of the three bays. Parks has other three bays. We have a new Casper Mountain Trail Center. That also includes approximately twenty six miles of groomed trails that we manage. The biathlon range and trail system, that's managed by the Casper Mountain Biathlon Club. I believe they have upwards of twenty miles of trails there. There's ten miles of single track trails that are typically maintained by Central Wyoming Trail Alliance volunteers. We have six campgrounds on the mountain with sixty eight campsites. We have an archery range. We have the Crimson Dawn Park and Museum that we hire seasonal staff to to oversee the museum there. We have Rotary Park and Bridle Trail. We have Ponderosa Park, which is almost twenty five hundred acres. We have Bear Trap Meadow. We are closely involved in the music festival that's held there. This is a highlight. We have seventeen outhouse vaults that we have to manage and pump. Which we do the ones we can, the other ones we have to contract out. We have a water and septic system for the Casper Mountain Trail Center. We oversee Hell's Half Acre, which is nine hundred and sixty acres of property. We oversee Vista West Park, which is eight point two acres of property. We have a management agreement. I'm not sure if it's called a management agreement or what it's called exactly. I'd have to look it up.
It's called an administrative agreement directly with the county commissioners.
That's two hundred acres and that's managed by a club out there. Alcova, we have six campgrounds with three of them that are reservation only. That's eighty one campsites in the reservation system. There's probably. Close to a hundred campsites that are first come, first served. Eight boat ramps, ten reservation only boat docks. Five reservation only picnic shelters, one marina concession, two hundred and fifty seven lot permits. Two of those are clubs, one hundred cabins and a hundred and fifty five trailers. Now, those are coming up from renewal in May of twenty six, so I will start revisions on those in coordination with the Bureau of Rec. And then bring those in front of the Board of Trustees for review as well. Two public bathhouses, two day use only beaches, an RV dump station, boat trailer parking. This is a BLM special use permit that we have to renew every three years. And then we have a water and sewer system. Great Reef Reservoir has ten campsites, one boat ramp. Boat trailer parking and one fishing pier. This is all managed by park staff. Bathwater Reservoir has five campgrounds with one of them in a reservation system. That's eleven campsites. Five boat ramps with three docks. We have numerous docks at Alcova that we also manage out there for the public. One marina concession, one RV dump station and a footbridge. At the lakes, we have fifty six outhouse vaults. So we have to manage those, make sure they're taken care of, whether it's staff. So when staff deals with an outhouse vault, we have a vac truck that holds one to one and a half vaults. And we have to haul it to town, dump it, haul it back. Now, we can't access all of them with our truck, so we have to contract some of those out. Projects and systems that have been implemented since twenty one. I started March twenty third of twenty one. Parks Department finalized the twenty twenty one Parks Rules and Regulations. Implemented the online camping reservation system in May of twenty one. We brought in a new payment processor that eliminated the fees to the county in fall of twenty four. Revised the two hundred and fifty seven lot permits and set the lot rents for twenty one through twenty six. We constructed the Diabase Campground and the new boat ramp at Diabase. That started in December twenty one with design. Contractor was awarded the contract in November twenty two and the completion was in September twenty. Wayfinding signs, they never got completed. That started in March of twenty one. Bids were received in May of twenty two. Notice of award was sent out in June of twenty two. Never received okay on the contract from legal. Contract contacted the bidder in twelve December twenty two, see if they were still interested. It basically died from their budget wise. Bear Trap Shelters, we had a selection of engineer, this is since I started. Before that, we had a previous architect that came up with a design. I think in twenty twenty. But we selected an engineer in December twenty one. I applied for grants that were turned down to fund that. Construction bids were received in April of twenty four. We were having some problems with the engineering firm getting some things done. Had discussion in May of twenty four with the county commissioners since the low bid was significantly greater than the budget. The budget line item for that was not approved for July of twenty four because. We needed to look into alternate designs for those to become a little more cost effective. We're still working on that. And haven't found a significant savings to justify presentation. The Casper Mountain Trail Center, everybody on here is aware of that project. State Line was architect in October of twenty. They were released from that sometime before March of twenty one. Purchase of the temporary lodge happened in December of twenty. We opened that temporary lodge, I received the certificate occupancy in November of twenty two. We then selected an architect in March of twenty two for the new building. Construction bids were received in April of twenty three. Award of that contract was in August of twenty three. That timeframe from April to August was for value engineering that took place. Sell at a temporary lodge happened in September twenty three. The school district MOU was signed in September twenty three, which had a significant, significant capital investment into the project. We ended up setting up temporary power for the stadium buildings so the school district could hold state events that year, September twenty three. We were able to complete and open that project to the public in January of twenty four. Only note I have on that is I'm still waiting on the delivery of the sinks and countertops for the kitchen. Tables have been delivered and we've been in full operation. Again, another project was replacement of a trailer, the bathhouse in the trailer park, the old bathhouse. Was replaced in March of twenty three. Removal of three vacant trailers from the Alcova Trailer Park, that happened in twenty three. I began that process with legal in twenty twenty one. The unpaid rent on some of those went back to twenty sixteen. Currently, we have one unpaid trailer for this last season. The Biathlon Club, we had an operating agreement we had to renew. It expired in October twenty three. You gentlemen are aware of all that. I conducted an onsite review of their facilities in June of twenty four. Submitted that report to them in August of twenty four. They have been working on meeting some of those. Compliance issues. The summer trail master plan, this is for single track trails on the mountain. This was adopted by the county commissioners in May of twenty three. Central Wyoming Trail Alliance has been doing construction on that all of last summer, twenty twenty four. What, how this works is they, they plan the constructions based off the master plan. I do onsite reviews with them. I provide approval, but that's been no cost to the county and I think they've constructed, I don't know how many miles, several miles this last year. Again, the boat trailer storage at at Alcova. That took almost a year to get the approval from the BLM on that because there was an expired permit I was unaware of before I. Came on to this position. Bear Trap Campground improvements that happened in the summer of twenty twenty four. Was unable to obtain funding from grants or budgetary to do improvements, so. With some of the materials we could get from Road and Bridge and staff. We leveled out all the sites, deepened them, widened them. And basically put some balusters to prevent parking out of the RV sites, so. We have a few signs to add this spring and then that's ready to go. We did that while the road was under construction, so camping was closed anyways. Yeah, sorry, I'm going fast. Ponderosa Park Trail Improvements that happened last summer. Wyoming State Trails provided a grant. They provided the staff and equipment and they basically revamped the trail down through the canyon, it's a whole loop. So you can now drive it with a vehicle versus rock crawling in Fourlaw. Rotary Park and the Bridle Trail, this is kind of ongoing, but there's a a small group that's been reviewing signage and and requesting improvements to. To some of the signage and information there. There's a naturalist, weed and pest is involved, rotary is involved. This is really going to be funded by Rotary, but it's going to. Improve the wayfinding signs on the trails. And it's going to provide some educational signs, geologic and ecologic signs. Along the way for people to kind of understand what they're seeing a little bit more. So that's, we're about to review some of the signs in the next couple of weeks when I get that. Looked at and figure out that everything's funded by other sources, then we'll probably go ahead with that. Hell's Half Acre Plan Improvements, those are ongoing. I have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in grants to pay for those. I have the planned site improvements in construction. Planned site improvements and plans to construct a boardwalk, ninety thousand dollars of that rec board grant is for a boardwalk. Stalling out a little bit because. Not getting the time to to pursue this, but I'm meeting with his at Casper soon. And we may look at a different avenue versus county staff doing this work. Road and Bridge is going to help with gravel and grading. My staff was going to help with implementation of some of the boardwalk, but I've lost. Free staff that, and my new staff's not near as qualified for this. We did a sewer lagoon rehab in fall of twenty four at Alcova. This required us to replace the weir, which had been thirty years old. While we had to drain the lagoon to replace the weir, we then excavated all of the. Twenty five, thirty years of built up sledge, sludge. It was anywhere from a foot to five feet deep. We currently have that drying in the second lagoon cell and that'll be hauled off and disposed of this spring. And then the last project, the Alcova Trailer Park Water and Sewer Sewer Design. We selected an engineer in December twenty three. I received complete construction drawings. February twenty four and the engineer's estimate is four point oh nine three million dollars to replace that. Our water and sewer restricted fund does not have anywhere close to that. It probably has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. We will be investigating ways to replace that. That system is fifty to seventy years old. And it it needs to be taken care of if we're going to continue to provide those services. Upcoming projects, we're replacing the kiosk information and all the kiosks at the lake. I have funding to replace the lodge water line up to the well. Have a site plan and need to get a surveyor and engineer to create a site plan for. New maintenance building at Alcova, that's way past outdated. I just recently found out there is a possibility that the county could purchase. Property from the Bureau of Rec versus putting it on managed land. What they told me is it's a minimum of forty acres, so I'm going to. At least investigate that so I can provide proper information to this, actually probably to the Board of County Commissioners on land acquisition. Got an Alcova cabin and waters, water and septic sewer study that I need to get out and I have archery range improvements that I'd like to find grant or budget money for this year. Currently, I have six full time staff working. I have one that's on FMLA. I have one open position. And I have three seasonal positions to fill for the summer, so. I think we're doing okay with six staff. Wouldn't mind a few more, but I understand the budget cycle. Are there any questions on this rant I just provided?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. M.
Don't you turn off my mic. Thank you, Mr. M. Um, I was hoping that we all received a letter here recently concerning the archery range. And I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on what your plans are, future plans are for the archery range, its improvements and possibly. Expansion or if there's anything there for parking or or anything like that. What are you?
Right now, I don't have any plans for expanded parking. I think we could possibly do that. I'd have to look at the boundaries of the property. Major focus is replacement of targets. The archery club did provide me pricing for different targets. I just don't have the funding for it. At this time, I may have some leftover money in this budget cycle to purchase some of them. But I'll have yet to see that. I won't know that for another month. And then CWTA, Central Wyoming Trail Alliance has offered to. Look at the trails that go down through the target systems and and clear, clear branches and whatnot. Central Wyoming Trail Alliance has been a a great nonprofit partner. They're willing to expand outside of just mountain bike trails. They assist us with the Bridle Trail on tree clearing. When they can, they, they're going to assist us on the Cottonwood Dinosaur Trail out at Alcova on doing some repairs on it because. I don't have the expertise for trail repair and my staff doesn't, so we're going to kind of take some guidance from from CWTA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Michael. I, I feel like we've had such a long meeting, I wasn't able to focus in on a lot of this stuff. I know we're going to have more discussion later. I think it shows how much the Parks Department you have had on your plate, so thank you for putting this together and at least giving us a primer of kind of. All the things that the Board of Trustees is going to be looking at and need to be helping, supporting you with. The question I had is really more budget related and that is. It's March fifth and so I would expect that you're. You are in the process of kind of thinking about budget for the next fiscal year. Should we be engaging or should we be setting aside some time for a meeting in April to engage with you? On some of the details of of what you're looking at or wanting and recommending?
It's a little new to me and and with you guys wearing two hats, it's a little interesting in that aspect. The first year I was with the county, Mike Adler was Parks Director and so I kind of. Followed suit on on what he did for the budget. The next three years I've done, done it myself and then present to the county commissioners. I'm not opposed to sitting with the the Board of Trustees. I know that's what's going to happen in the future, but with you guys wearing two hats, is it? Redundant to do that in a sense, or do we want to continue the way we have the past years? And I'm open to whatever this board wants to do. And I'm open to whatever this board wants to do.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I I agree with. Mr. Milne's comments, which does, I guess. Um, it's either there are going to either be some redundancies or going to be super well-prepared as County Commissioners. When we have a second bite at the apple, but I'm not really seeing, I I'm really seeing it more of as kind of. Uh, two different things as trustees, having some good back and forth about, well, help us know what your priorities are. And and you just kind of given us your your overviews and things and and then when we're actually. Um, looking at it as B O C C, we might be, you know, more focused in on kind of the the bigger. You know, maybe the maybe the bottom dollar. I I think we I think we're going to be looking at it in in different, through different lenses, so. I I think we should should do it in April.
Does this, does the chairman want to schedule that meeting and let me know when that'll be?
Yeah, we'll get that scheduled. Yeah, we'll get that taken care of and and that doesn't mean we can't work with you between now and then on. Projects and things like that and trying to get some stuff kind of figured out, so. I think there's a lot of stuff out there right now that that are going to take more than a single meeting. To sit down and figure out just exactly what it's going to cost and what we need to do to accomplish.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Any public comment?
There we go. Thanks for the positive uh movement tonight. It's encouraging. The train's getting back on the track and it's been off for a long, long time and and uh. With all respect for what Michael's doing, which is a ton and what the advisory board's attempted to do over the last ten years. You know, we're getting back to where we need to go, but from what you just heard from him, I think it's pretty obvious. There's a ton of work to do and um it's going to take a while and a lot of it goes way back. I mean, there's been deferred management for a long, long time. And there's things that, you know, I know need to be attended to or grants that need to be recorded or acted upon. And I've been involved with all these things and we didn't get to all of them. To get back to maybe a seven-person board is going to stay pretty darn busy and you'd have immediately two empty slots you could fill. Um, with outsiders, but whatever, that'll work out. Subcommittee's are going to be really important with other people in the community. From the archery range, from wherever. Um, but anyway, and and my comments aren't specifically to the lake. I'm, I go use the lakes, but I don't get into the politics and the management out there. Mountains enough. Um, but anyway, two concerns. One is those bear trap shelters. Um, there's one way to save a ton of money on those. It's not, it's not to build three, build one. I've never been able to find. Spec, you know, any reports on how much usage there ever was because of the confusion at the Parks Department over the many years. But you may not need three and those were reserved for many years and nobody knows how often they're even used, but. Maybe start with one and have some little shelters like out at the lake where a family would have a picnic, but not an event. Um, one bigger one, a few smaller ones. Um, there's a lot of ways to do that way cheaper and the city's done it by the the soccer fields and all that. So I'll just throw that out, but the other thing is the mountains dry. And I mean dry, we don't have a water system up there. We're one clown with a cigarette butt from burning that whole place up. And I, you know, I live in the middle of it. I've run from the flames. Uh, the center of the mountain hasn't been burnt. The east and west side have been. And when that um Garden Creek Fire was a couple of years ago, I met you at Bear Trap. I don't know, that was a scary night.
Yes, it was.
And uh, you know, so the threat is real and we've got campers going up there who think there's water, but there's not water. Um, out of town people all the time. They come to my house looking for water. So people tell me, well, the fire station's right across from the uh trail lodge. Yeah, but the people who run the fire station aren't right across from there. Those trucks are locked up, trucks are all locked up and the the volunteer force has got to be. You know, gathered up. If there's a fire or a car wreck wreck on the mountain, the first response is city of Casper from the Sunrise Station. They got their boots on and the trucks are warm and they're rolling. Second response comes from the county out on Robertson Road. And that's all cooperative and it's great because the city guys can move fast. And then the volunteers, you know, get organized and figure out what's going on. They don't have a lot of structure equipment. They have wildfire equipment. But the, as as anybody around fire and you know, um, that immediate response. If a camper's up there and it's campfire and we allow fires up there, which is pretty crazy to me, but if that fire gets out of hand. Every minute counts. A five-gallon jug of water can save the mountain. And um, there's nowhere to get it unless you brought it with you, so. Um, Michael just mentioned, and I've been pushing this for a long time, but I've had it, I mean, the commissioners change, staff changes at Parks Department. I, you know, who do you talk to, but. He has funding to put a new water line from the new lodge to the well. I'd really like that to be teed off and have a fro- frostproof fill station. In the parking lot of the new lodge with the kiosk, with the map, with the directions and all that, but have a place where campers. Can fill a jug and you can secure that thing. I've heard, well, the residents will fill their systems. Well. You can make that at a low fill height where they're not going to fill their pickup truck or whatever. Um, but have at least one potable public water station. On that mountain, even if it means somebody can run from the campground and fill a bucket or whatever. And plus, it's just hospitality for the campers. They don't have to come all the way back into town because they didn't, you know, they ran out of water. Um, but I I think we have an opportunity there when this new water line goes in and we've got room in that big new parking lot. And I think it should be budgeted in and it would be a convenience. But the fire threat threat is real and there's no, I mean, just the idea that there's sixty campgrounds, how many? I don't know, bunch and no water for any of them. And fires permitted at all of them. Um, it's a scary deal and uh. I that immediate, I mean, it's it's just something that wouldn't cost much to to route that line over there. And um, we have a lot of, we have staff now. I mean, you're going to be staffed up there most of the summer, right? It's kind of like, there's more people are watching it, but anyway, I'd rather have somebody steal a little water than let the mountain.
Kind of wrap it up. All right, thank you. We've been here a long time already.
I've been here longer. I'll just point that out.
Well, we've been here since three o'clock today.
Thirty years. But anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
No, fifty, but I'm trying not to seem that old.
All right. Hopefully, we hopefully we have no no trustee comments. Good. All right, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting.